Good evening and thank you so much for your patience. And welcome to the special board of directors meeting of Monday, November 30, 2015. The purpose of this special meeting is to receive and consider the results of the Parks and Recreation Survey conducted in collaboration with George Mason University and the Association's Park and Recreation Advisory Committee. I would entertain a motion to move to adopt the special meeting agenda for November 30.
I'll second.
Okay, is there discussion? All those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Not two hands, but any extensions. Thank you so much. We're at the item C, member comments, and Sabrina just ran out to get our list. We have Eileen Boone.
I don't sign a sheet. Sorry. I have no gum.
All right.
We do sign a sheet.
Mary Shadlock.
Oh, yeah, I was so drunk.
Just wanted to sign. Well, thank you very much. If we have anyone in the audience who has not signed but would like to speak, please feel free to come to the podium. If not, we will move to item. We'll move to item D, other report on results of the Reston Association's 2015 Parks and Recreation Survey. And we've all been waiting very patiently to get this information. This evening, we will be hearing from doctors Susan L. Slocum and Brenda Wiggins of the Division of Sport, Recreation, and Tourism at George Mason University. They've been working with our staff and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee on the 2015 Reston Association Parks and Recreation Survey, and I understand they will be presenting a high-level overview of the survey results tonight. Both representatives from GMU will be out of town during our regular board meeting on December 17 and wanted to report to us before the end of 2015 to enable our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee the opportunity to begin their review of the results as soon as possible. Doctors, you have the floor. So come up to the podium, please. I think, is that mic, it is on? Yes.
Well, thank you very much. It's nice to be with you, and to be with you, and to be with one of my old, old students, Laura. Oh, wow. It was very cool how this all got started. Larry was talking to the president's wife of George Mason University, Beth Cabrera, and as a result of that, we've had the opportunity to conduct this recreation, park, and open space plan for you. Sue Slocum is one of my colleagues, and the two of us are going to probably present about 30 slides for you tonight. We're still validating the data, but this will give you some of the highlights, as we like to say. So the final survey was developed using a literature review. We had a graduate student helping us as well, as well as the input from the recreation staff at Reston Association, the volunteer board members, and many of the questions from the 2005 plan as well. The research team met with senior director and deputy director for recreation in early April, and we discussed what the project should be, all about, and then at that time, we also got feedback from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And then Sue met with Board of Directors as well. We really thank you for the chance to have an early meeting with you, since our semester is a little bit different from others, and we need to depart after we finish our finals. The Recreation Association was responsible for the data collection process. All survey recipients were chosen using a randomly generated mailing list. We sent out paper copies, or you all sent out paper copies, to 2,500 households with a link to an online version as well, and that happened in July. 100 surveys were returned due to inaccurate addresses, and then again, on 31st of August, a postcard reminder was sent, followed by 30th of September, when a survey was sent to an additional 1,300 residents, with 41 returned as undeliverable. The survey then closed on the 25th of October. In total, we received 320 surveys. That response rate then was an 8.7 percent. Data is analyzed using SPSS. Again, I said Natalie Haynes is helping us with that. The general descriptive statistics are provided for all the survey questions, and then additionally, a NO was run to determine user characteristics. Supplemental data is also going to be available in our final report. I wanted to just start this rolling with a little bit about the respondents' demographics. They were asked a series of questions about their demographic and household situation, and the majority of households that responded to the survey contained family members between the ages of 59 and 69 years of age. That was 26 percent of the respondents. In total, 78 percent of the family members represented in the study were adults. As shown in the pie chart, most respondents own their own property, 96 percent, and live in either a single-family home, in terms of respondents, 51 percent, or a townhouse, 35 percent. It's apparent to us that the apartment dwellers, as well as the renters, are underrepresented in this study. However, the four areas of Reston are well-represented in terms of the sample and the respondents, and they were most likely long-term residents of Reston. 68 percent have lived here for at least 11 years or longer. The other slide shows gender. 51.7 percent, excuse me, 61 percent were females who responded, and 39 percent were males. As far as income goes, 47 percent make over $150,000. 25 percent between $100,000 and $150,000. Can't read my, oh, yeah, 12 percent between $75,000 and $100,000. 12 percent between $50,000 and $75,000. 3 percent, $25,000 and $50,000. And I'm not putting in the $1 when I talk about that. In terms of ethnicity, 89 percent of those who responded were Caucasian, white. 4 percent represented, let me see, can you read that there? Asian. 3 percent black. And Latino, 1 percent. So again, that is a very small response there. We also included, and good luck reading that, because I certainly can't, that Larry was helpful in identifying the Reston census in terms of the gender, income, and ethnicity, as well as type and ownership of Reston in general versus those who responded from the Reston Association. So there is a comparison there, and we'll talk about that in our final report. Sue, you ready to roll?
Do you have any questions? Do you want to do questions as we go, or should we just keep going?
Why don't we hold them until we have the presentation?
Okay, cool. So we divided the survey into four parts, and I'm going to present the results basically survey question by survey question. And we started with programs and activities, then we move into facilities, and then we do open space, and then we do some kind of general value questions about parks, recreation, and open space. So I'll start with programs and activities, and some of these questions will need a little explanation, but hopefully I can get through them quite well. And I apologize, because these are really small screens. So we basically asked all the respondents to tell us how often they used the programs. So these would be any kind of programming-type question, not necessarily the facilities. And I'm going to have to go to your TV.
I totally understand.
Yeah. Yeah. So the most popular programs were mostly recreational, I'm not even going to be able to read these, recreational tennis, tennis classes, tennis tournaments. All three had the highest response rate, where they're basically using those at least once a month. Yeah. Oh, yeah, reading glasses, that's the key to success over 40, isn't it? Okay, so let's go back to that, because we've got recreational swimming and water exercise is the top list, and then kind of followed by recreational tennis, and then seems to be an interest in senior, which we did rank seniors as 55-plus. And there was a lot of discussion about how to determine what is senior age, because kind of in today's society, there's a big difference between 55 and working, and say 65 and retired, and whether we can categorize those. But the literature showed us that 55-plus is what is considered seniors at this point. So we're going to have a lot of active seniors in our, not that seniors aren't active, but we're going to have a wider range, age range, that will represent more activity in some of our senior programming. Then we were asked them to pick three of their top activities in which they participate. You'll notice that the N there, 534 responses, that's because everybody gets three choices, okay? And the top activities, again, came back to recreational swimming, senior activities, water exercise. We were doing this in July. It's important to kind of keep that in mind of what you're thinking about as you're pulling out a survey in the middle of July, you're thinking about water. Whereas if we had asked it in the wintertime, I'm not sure that indoor fitness would have been more highly received or not. But it gives you kind of an idea. The weighted total, basically, if they picked that as their first choice, we gave it a weight of three. If they picked it as a second choice, they had their weight of two, and if it was a third choice, they had a weight of one. Added those up, and so the weighted total. So you'll see that, you know, things like the recreational swimming ranks really, really high. It's substantial above the rest. So then we asked them the time of day in which they are available to participate, and I'll be honest with you, there's nothing shocking in this whatsoever. Seniors are available weekdays. Youth and teens are available evenings. Adults seem to prefer to recreate in the mornings and evenings. One time that didn't seem real popular was kind of mid-days on Saturdays, but other than that, I think it's pretty common sense based around a work week, the modern work week, Then we asked them how they prefer to hear about Reston activities, to find out how they're getting their information for any new programming or any specials that you may be offering, special events. And the majority of them are using email, traditional email, which is funny, because I've just come from a conference that says email advertising is back in, because we've all, we've all kind of gotten overdosed with email advertising. We were blocking it all. Now we're inundated with stationary ads on the side of our web pages, and interactive email is coming back, and people are using email as kind of like the old phone call list, you know, where we would all pass around the phone and call the next group of people. So email is back in, and it's not surprising to see that in the results here. RA's news, branching out, those types of things seem to be quite popular with the We also wanted to see what kind of activities people were doing outside of Reston. Now, this was more of a qualitative response, where they just typed in whatever it is that they're doing, and then we went through and categorized them. So some people were, you know, walking their dogs, some people were walking, some people specifically said hiking, but we can kind of group some of these together to get an idea of where people are going and what they're doing. So hiking was the most popular activity done outside of Reston. There's a list of a couple places. Those were specifically named, although not all respondents specifically named a location, so, but those are the ones that came up the most often. Going to the gym is something that's done outside of Reston Association. Things like the theater, museum, concerts, those types of things.
Where are those concerts?
Yeah, well, you'll see Wolf Trap is mentioned up there. The type of act, yeah, George Mason University, yeah. Anyway, so these are the kind of activities that are being done outside of Reston, so that you have a general idea of what those are. And then you'll see at the bottom where it says mean 2.05. Once they told us what they were doing outside of Reston, we asked them how often they did that. So two means, a 2.0 would be once a month they're going outside of Reston for some recreational program or activity. Then we asked them what kind of programming should Reston offer for the future of Reston residents, trying to get an idea that demographics are changing in this particular area, that the metro has brought in kind of a new resident to the area. We have an aging population, but we also have an upcoming young population with the millennials, and trying to figure out kind of what activities should be on the radar for future programming. Sports came in really high, classes, specifically fitness-type classes. There was some interest in finance classes. And then, like I said, sports and youth were pretty much the big, now this was a question underneath programs, and you'll see a lot of facility comments. I think that is just, people outside of our discipline may not understand that facilities and programs are distinctly different for us, at least in funding sources and in managerial resources that you need, so. So then we had them rate the programs by age group to get a general idea of what is So then we had them rate the programs by age group to get a general idea of what is most important. And they were given eight choices, so you'll see all the eight choices. For ages zero to 10, basically for children, sports is the number one activity, followed very closely by educational or instructional programs and nature education programs. So parents are really looking at sports and education as being the key trends in youth activity and youth programming at the moment. Looking at teens, it's also, sports programs is number one, but fitness seems to be a growing issue with teens. Not surprising, I think we know that from general trends. As we move into the adults, fitness stays at the top. Fitness is definitely the priority for three of the four age groups. There's also an interest in art, music, and dance. And that's not surprising because a lot of people haven't had the opportunity to be exposed to that in school because that's a lot of the programs that have been cut. And as they're becoming adults, they're realizing that they're interested in learning more about art, music-type programs. For seniors, again, it was fitness and back to education. So we're seeing really common trends. You know, these questions are asking different things, but the same information is coming up. Sports, fitness, education is really the programming that seems to be standing out for Reston residents. So we're going to move on to facilities. Let me turn the page. And our first question pretty much followed the same question that we asked for activities. What facilities are you using and how often are you using them? Pathways for walking and running was the most popular response, followed by using the lake or the pond and then the pool. So, and we'll see again, pathways will come up repeatedly in the facility part of this discussion. We also asked them what were their top three facilities that they used outside of, or excuse me, the top three, to rate the top three from that list. We weighted them again. If they picked it as their first choice, it was, you know, it got a rating of three, second choice rating of two, first choice rating of one. And pathways by far exceeded everything else that was out there. Pools came in second, lake or pond, once we weighted it, by priority came in third. So then we wanted to know, did I miss page? We wanted to know how they got to the facilities that they used. Most people are actually walking to the facility. Again, the survey was done in July and we have to kind of keep that in mind. But mostly they're walking and on occasion they are driving. Those were the two most popular. And it basically came down to distance, how far away they lived from the facility that they're using and how much time was available in their schedule to get there. So then we asked them what facilities they're using outside of Reston. And this was a generated list. It was not open-ended. We gave them a bunch to choose from. Indoor fitness was a big one, the Reston Community Center and indoor swimming. So most of the stuff that they're doing outside of Reston were indoor activities that aren't available currently in Reston Association. So then we asked them another open-ended qualitative question. Basically, what do you think are the top three facilities that Reston needs for its future growth? Swimming pool ranked very high. In particular, we're looking for indoor swimming pool. And they're looking for lap space is what they're looking for. Fitness and indoor sports came in second and tennis came in third. And I think, I think we all know that Reston's a swimming and tennis community in many ways. So, all right. So we'll move on to the parks and open space. And you'll recognize the format of this question again. We asked them what open space they are using. Hiking and walking was number one. And they're doing a lot of wildlife watching and kind of nature appreciation. So it's more that the nature trails are where they're doing their hiking and walking rather than kind of paved, more urban-type trails. Running was also popular and biking, which mostly does occur on the trails as well. We had talked to them about their pathway usage, what they use it for. Exercise was the most common use of the pathways. They use it to enjoy parkland and to access the facilities. As we know, at the time, 46% were already walking to Reston facilities. We'd asked that question earlier. And a few of them are using them for transportation or telecommuting, or commuting, not telecommuting. We then asked them about satisfaction with open space, how Reston is doing in maintaining the open space. I would say overall, these are scores to be highly proud of. So a four basically is somewhat satisfied. It's a very positive, it's not dissatisfied in any way. Maintenance of park and open space, cleanliness of parks and open space, the quantity of parks and open space, all scored above four. Conservation of natural resources and some of the upgrades were just under four. So then we started talking to them more about future development. Where should Reston, you know, invest their resources and their time? We looked at some new amenities and we had gone through and really looked at kind of what was out there and what is trends in suburbia across the United States. Connectivity and walkability, again, you'll see that. That is something that was highly valued. You'll see nature landscaping, habitat, those types of things. Open places, gathering places, kind of the piazza type is also very, very popular. Pretty much everything was highly rated with the exception of dog parks. And I'm a big proponent of dog parks and I've served on park and rec committees. People are using the pathways for their dogs. They feel like they have a lot of dog space anyway. So rather than taking away from what is currently natural and turning it into another park, they're already walking their dogs on the trails. And that's part of the jogging process and walking process, so not highly rated. And then lastly, we asked them a series of what I call value statements, just kind of what does parks and recreation mean to you? And these were all really high ranking as well. So recreation activities are important for the social fabric of Reston. Reston Association has a high standard of park maintenance. These are all scored above four as well. Open space and natural areas are well-managed, above four. Programs and facilities played a major part in my decision to move to Reston is above And then you can kind of read the rest as they work down. But those were kind of the four or five really key strengths that Parks and Rec scored with the Reston residents. And I think that that reflects the open space and the maintenance of open space, which also scored high. It does seem to be highly valued. I will stop there. I have tons more, but this is kind of just the beginning. We will be doing more analyses. We're in the process of kind of looking at how people value things based on where in Reston they live. We're looking more at some of those age demographics to see, you know, if there's anything that jumps out as being very pertinent to a certain age group. We're not really able to do that with the ethnicity because we just don't have a varied ethnic background in the respondents. And we don't have a good variety between owners and renters, unfortunately, so.
So we'd like to thank you and Doctors Slocum and Wiggins. And I'd like to go around the board table, if you don't mind, and see if the board members have any questions, starting with Jacinda.
Thank you for doing this and it looks great. I can't wait to see all the data and everything. That's all.
Julie?
The 8.8 response, it seems low to me, given the number that went out.
So what we did do, we had lots of conversation about kind of how best to market the fact that we were doing a survey. And I do think that we had come up with a number of suggestions and we had gone, you know, like I said, we did consult with a variety of different organizations. I think one of the things, first and foremost, people that own homes are usually vested in their community. And so it's not surprising that renters did not respond to the survey. Additionally, renters tend to be newcomers and may not really have formed an opinion about, you know, or formed a pattern of use for RA facilities and programs. So it's not, I'm not at all surprised that we have kind of not gotten the renters and we've not gotten the apartment dwellers and that, you know, those types of situations. We did have online surveys and paper surveys, which we did get more paper survey responses, which is kind of the traditional way, but we wanted to make sure that we had both of them. I do think additional marketing would have been beneficial and we had tossed around perhaps talking to the homeowners associations to kind of get them on board to promote to the, especially to the renters.
The cluster?
The condominiums and those, to kind of increase that. So also July and, you know, people are on vacation, the kids are out of school, not everybody is really kind of home. And that's just the way the timeline worked out, you know? I think because we didn't start till April, you know, and then, you know, there was, I think a year process through this would be a better way to get more variety in our responses. And I, you know, I would highly, and I think that will be in our recommendation, that we need a little bit more time, not actually having the survey open for any length of time, but I do think we need time to build community involvement and community, you know, information to let them know what we're doing and why it's important that we're doing. And so that would be, that would be a recommendation. So 8.8%, you know, may be considered low, but you are doing a resident survey during the time of the year when people are gone.
So were you suggesting another survey of the same questions be sent out in the winter? Is that what?
No, no, no. No, no. This project's pretty much done. So it would be something that, you know, you will have to go through this process. I'm assume, you have some charter that says you have to do it every five years, every 10 years. And I would suggest just perhaps giving yourself a little bit more time next time. And people are changing in the way that surveys are done. The old traditional methods aren't working. I think adding the online was a huge advantage and it did give us a lot of people that we may not have gotten. We don't know if they would have done the paper if we didn't have that option. You know, we don't have any way of knowing that one way or the other. But I think that helped kind of get that response rate up. But I do think that people are inundated with all sorts of surveys all the time now and it's something that, we had done a lot of research looking at what were the advantages of each. We looked at what Arlington is also doing, both online and paper. Fairfax was doing online and paper. It's, you know, it is a new trend, but I think there needs to be a little bit more creative marketing behind it. And I don't think we really had the time to brainstorm through that because I think every organization is having the same issue. This is not a Reston-specific issue.
My next question, indoor tennis. I know there was a slide that had that on and I don't remember what the answer was.
So that will, oops. Well, indoor tennis came up quite a bit. So it will be, no, facilities, at the end of facilities. Yeah, so it'll be in that one. What are the numbers in parentheses? Is that number? Okay, so that's, so basically I went through and said anybody that mentioned tennis, there were, we'll use tennis. There were 20 people that mentioned, pardon me, mentioned tennis. Of those, 15 specifically said indoor tennis. And then you had one that said free tennis courts, one that said tennis bubble, and one that said tennis practice wall, which leaves two more who had just put tennis. And I don't have any way of knowing this.
So would you mind talking to the mic?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm used to being in a classroom. I go to the person that asked the question. I will say that again. There were 20 people in total that listed tennis. Of those 20 people, 15 specifically said indoor tennis courts. One person said tennis bubble, one person said tennis practice wall. The other ones that are not listed there, I think there's three more remaining, they just put tennis with no further description. I have no way of interpreting what they meant by that other than tennis. So, you know, you look at pool, there were, in total, 25 people that put pool. Does that make sense? Okay.
Julie, anything else? Why don't we jump over to Ken?
Well done. Having done graduate work, I did my graduate work at GMU and I was in this program in its early years. I think the typical general public survey rate, as I recall, is around one to two. Something a little more sophisticated like this is maybe on a good day, 10 to 15. Then something like an internal survey is getting you up into the higher number. So I think the 8% is not bad, given what was put together here based upon my training that goes back years. I think this is really well done. It gives me some, some things that I've been intuitively thinking about, that our marks are always on our open spaces and our open area amenities and everything associated with that. Not diminishing our pavilions, well, actually, I think I have to bring those in. Not diminishing our programs or whatever, but it seems people are very outdoor-oriented in Reston. And so if you look at those categories, more pools or at least an indoor pool would be great so we could go swimming year-round or else we have to go somewhere else. And taking advantage of our parks, our pathways and so forth for additional fitness seems to be some common area. So it validates a lot of what I was thinking. It also helps us put together some ideas, what we need to be thinking about from the TETRA standpoint. What would come out of this? One of the things that seems to be very pertinent as well is there's another dimension. 55-plus, big turnout on this survey, which was something I don't think, I think we need to pay special attention to that, especially for TETRA, as well as adult. Fitness, education, all those things. I think those are things that TETRA would benefit from as well. It was very revealing, so I thought this was well done.
Yeah, I mean, and to add that, back to the response rate, when you are out, person-to-person knocking on doors or putting a survey in front of someone, you start seeing 18, 20, 25% response rates. Male, impersonal, yeah, I don't think eight is, 8% is not bad. I think my concern would be the ethnic diversity and the lack of renters would be far more concerning to me. And along what you said about the open space, back to this slide, I think one of the other things that did come out that's probably going to be a recommendation is that there was a lot of interest in maintaining what you guys already have rather than building new things. Because there is this fear that the open space is disappearing quite quickly. So, you know, it's all about, okay, you know, if you want to, if you decide that an indoor pool is something of value, how do you convert what you have rather than building a new one?
Okay, anything else, Ken?
Yeah, my question was about the 8%. Is that statistically valid? But I'll assume that it is. And it is upsetting to not have better diversity in the respondents. As I look at this, I, I'm kind of looking for the blend of what our other partners bring to the party as well because we know that, for example, there will be a new indoor pool facility coming. And so maybe that allows us to, okay, well, we don't need to worry about that, we can focus on other things. So really interesting information.
And there's a lot of information that isn't really public yet from the outside perspective and you guys may have privileged information.
Right.
So, you know, I really couldn't in this report say, oh, well, Reston's already getting an indoor pool. I don't know.
Right, exactly.
You know, I would feel a little, so there is, there is information that you will have to interpret based on knowledge that you have that we don't have.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Mike?
Yeah, good, good data. Basic question I have is 8.8%, I imagine that this is a valid survey. It would be nice to get more data. Let's say we were to get 20%, would the trends be much different?
If we got more variety, ethnic and renter?
... that a minimum number of lines are connected to this conference.
Sorry.
You want to continue your meeting?
I would say that I would not be comfortable saying that if we had more ethnic diversity and more renters, that the results would be the same. I, I don't know the answer to that. And I think that any study you do, the very last thing, you put your weaknesses down. This is what, these are kind of the holes in this study and, you know, and these are the recommendations that we take certain things with a grain of salt as we look at them. And I definitely think that's one of them. The ethnic diversity, I think, is the most challenging to me. I would say that that is something to be concerned about. Renters, you know, I don't know that renters are permanent, long-term residents. I don't know how many of them, you know, are here and maybe come homeowners in a couple of years, that that's, you know, what their plan is. I, you know, I don't really know how that development pattern will change over time in Reston, if the ethnic diversity is. And I do think that different... And I, I do think that different ethnicities recreate differently. That's my gut, so that, that is a concern. And the other concern would also be why they did not respond. Because there's, there's no, there's no evidence that they didn't get the survey. We assume that they also got the survey, so what is that? It's not uncommon, it's not an uncommon problem in, in community-based surveys.
In terms of the survey, I did receive the survey and I did, I got the second survey, but I don't recall getting the first survey.
No, they were completely different. So it was randomly generated, so it was sent out to 200, 2,500 homes. We let that go for four weeks or six weeks. Then we picked a whole new group of 1,300. So you were in the second group, you were not, you would not have gotten both. You would have only gotten one or the other. Otherwise, yeah, the response rate, you know, but the response rate is the 2,500 plus the 1,300.
Yes.
So.
I was surprised too by the gender.
That's very common. Most women fill out, fill out the paperwork for the, for the families. Yeah. It's not that you have more. More women in Reston, it's just that women tend to know what the kids are doing, what the family's doing, tends to schedule the recreational activities even if they're full-time working. And so women tend to, you usually get, unless you're out, again, door knocking and handpicking groups in a survey, you tend to get door, who fills out.
I want to acknowledge the comments of my peers because I had many of the same thoughts as well. I think the fact that this was sort of an open-ended survey is very helpful. You know, we do know an awful lot that's occurring here, the fact that the Park Authority is talking about a swimming pool here. And independent of what, what they're doing, the results show that in fact, there's interest in that. And it's not only indoor pool, but indoor recreation space, including indoor tennis.
Indoor tennis, indoor pool, indoor fitness. That's really, I would say the three top, and, and trails.
And then accessibility. Now, the facilities need to be accessible to the community, not necessarily by car, but through the trail system and otherwise.
Yeah. Yeah, and connectivity in communities is hugely growing. You look at, at. Cities like Richmond, for example, trying to find places kind of close, you know, being a walk-in bike in the city is really, really, and you have a generation that's affected.
Now, separate from this survey, similar surveys in other cities at this time with similar demographics, are you seeing similar trends or can you comment on that?
I'm probably going to ask Brenda to answer that because I'm from the West. I don't, the West is a very different. We may have something in our final report about that, but we're not there yet.
Okay, great. Good?
Julie, yes?
I had one more thought and I might have to find it on the slide, but there was a slide that talked about community gathering places and that was facilities. And what, I was encouraged by that even being listed and counted, what the open plazas and gathering spaces. Sorry, I'm talking away from the mic. And I thought, as we are looking at how we deal with the changeover of our village centers and preservation of our open spaces and gathering spaces, the sense of community that we need to continue to maintain within Reston, I thought that was very interesting that that rated so high.
And a lot of communities are moving to kind of outdoor activities such as farmer's markets, small-scale music festivals with local musicians, maybe an opportunity for local food or beverage to come out and you can taste samples of, you know, craft beers or whatever it is. Those are really growing as well. So it's, it's nice to have, I think people certainly expect having an open area. I live in Manassas and we can have an open area like that. And there is something every single weekend going on. It's not the farmer market, it's musicians, it's, you know, all free entertainment on Saturday.
We have Lake Anne.
We're ahead of her.
We have other village centers, whatever, farms. People to be able to walk to and, and experience those things. I know you've been working on Hunter's Woods ideas. Politics is certainly something that's right in front of us right now.
When we finish this, I'll be able to. Tell you if where someone lives in Reston dictates how they answered that question. It may not be an issue. It may not be that someone in one area rates something highly, someone in another area rates it, rates it lowly. But we will, we will be able to look at that and we will present anything that will be called significant. Where, yeah, if you live in Lake Anne, you are more inclined to want open spaces. We'll be able to determine that. We're working on that this week. Cool. So talk to me about the confidence rate. Confidence, so this is all, yeah, this is all descriptive in the moment, so there is no confidence interval. So confidence interval is when we start doing these more advanced regression analysis, Sanovas and those kind of things. Like I said, when we look at where you are living, how you feel about something, we'll have confidence intervals for that. But for this, these are just general descriptive. So there's a mean and a variance, but I'm not comparing it to anything, so there's no confidence. We're about the number of people that live in the community. You were given that information, I'm sure when you started, I know. Well, so we had, go back, in our demographics section that Brenda covered, right there. So we have a percentage there of the different areas in which people live. But total community, I would imagine you would have looked at that and want to determine what a, an appropriate number of return rate you would want to have back so you have some confidence in, in the results across the board that you would get. So I think there's a confusion about what confidence intervals are. Confidence or intervals are very important when you're comparing across sites. So for example, if we discover that if you live in a certain part of Reston, you rank open space higher, okay? Then yes, we will be able to have a confidence interval. And if there are huge variances between how many live in one section, how many live in another, it would be a point of concern. Which is why we can't do it for race because we don't have enough diversity. There isn't enough respondents in certain racial categories, we won't be able to do that. I'm not sure that we'd be able to do it between renters and owners either because there isn't enough, there basically aren't enough renters that responded. But for our communities where they live, we're pretty evenly distributed. If you look at the pie chart up there on the, on the left. So, you know, I don't anticipate there being problems, but we will check the confidence intervals. So that will be part of the, the process. And so what we will present back to you is only things that are significant within a confidence interval of 95. We'll probably present anything within a confidence interval of 90%, but we won't highlight or discuss anything unless the confidence interval is at least 95%. So when we have that, as much as we start comparing. I think that's pretty diverse. I think we've really hit, you know, it's not about how many people live in one area, it's about do we have equivalent numbers represented in the sample in those areas? Does that kind of answer your question?
It does and I, it answers from where you came from. I know, having graduated from George Mason and the master's program and having to go through the survey coursework as part of that for public administration, that they, one of the key things when we were doing survey research was if you have an N population, you need to get X number of responses back. So I know that one of the things that we did here was make sure that we hit all of the districts, we got an equal number of, of representative sample to send out to the different districts. So it's great to hear that we're getting a fairly decent even number back within the districts. That's good. I, a hypothesis would have been you're going to get more owners responding than renters. And since that's what we have more of and that, what we've seen in, in elections and things like that is typically what we get. So I, the answer or the question I was asking with the generalizable.
Is more of a, is more of a general question. You sent out X number of, you were expecting to get a certain.
Number of surveys back in order to do any statistical analysis or summation of, of the data that you're looking at. You had to have a certain number back. Are you comfortable with the number of responses, confidence level, of number of responses that you got back for the entire population that you're surveying?
Not just in the different districts. Yes, I would say anything over about 275 surveys allows you to do a number of statistical analyses. There are a few that I will not do because we don't have the numbers for, but I would be doing analyses for, like an Oba is what we've talked about, basically comparing variants across groups. I can usually do that with more than 275 people.
And the reason why I ask this is that this information will be used to make some decisions for the organization.
Right.
So I, I was concerned when I was hearing concern about the 8% return rate and really questioning validity of whether the information could be used. So that's why I asked the question that I did. Can this information be used to make future decisions for the organization?
Statistically, yes. This is not real generalizable across Reston because we still have 92% of people that have not participated in the survey. But you had no intention from the very beginning to ask everybody in Reston who wanted a sample. I would say that in, I would put my reputation on the line that the way Larry and Laura did the random generation and the way that the surveys went out and the reminders, I think it's a good sample. I think it's a very good sample. I'm not going to do a bunch of analysis, nor is Brenda, that, that don't work with 300 people. But I think anything over 275, if I wanted to publish this in an academic journal on leisure, I would have no issues from the peer reviewers. I'm not concerned about that. Thank you. Yeah.
Hey, I'm Chuck Thomas from the Live. Sorry, I'm, I'm late here.
Hi, Jeff.
I kind of forgot about the time change when I said I could make this call.
Any other questions regarding the directions? Do you have any questions?
I, I don't, thank you.
Okay, did you hear any of the information that was presented?
I, I did and I'm.
Good.
I'm going to materials.
Okay, very good, good, thank you. Well, we certainly would like to thank you, Doctors Slocum and Wiggins. I'm just really, really excited and I'm just really looking forward to getting the final and all results, which will be available to us in mid-January, is that correct?
We will have it all for you by the 15th of December. So what Larry and Laura need to do then to, to get it ready for you guys is, you know, I'm sure that there's a process of the.
Okay, fantastic, yeah, that sounds good. Thanks, thank you so much again.
No problem.
We just really, really appreciate it. Oh, down to item eight. Jeff, you there? Okay. I believe our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, I think we just got the whole committee here tonight.
Yeah.
They were actually, we see the final results as well. I'd like to invite, are you Aaron Diamond? And Tara Crandall-Tee? Hi, how are you? RA Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, can you tell us about the committee's next steps?
Good evening, Board. Jeff, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. My name's Aaron Diamond, I'm the chairman of the Parks Recreation Advisory Committee. This is Tara, she's the co-chair of the Parks Recreation Advisory Committee and pretty much this is your Parks Recreation Advisory. Very active, very promising people. Your Parks Recreation Advisory Committee has been working hard to come up with a consistent strategy following our work plan. We are slightly derailed by a low initial response to our survey, but the time we followed through by RA has allowed us to get the response numbers we need. We have heard from GMU and we will now take the information and compile what we hope to be solid suggestions for the Board as we move forward to the next stage of our working plan. Our committee has kept astride positive tennis efforts within our community and recently created pickleball. We have a member of our committee strongly involved in the youth sports Peta Property David. And he has kept us updated every step of the way. We are also planning on meeting with the leaders of various sports and recreation groups in an effort to find out what their top needs and suggestions might be. As Reston moves forward with new growth and future plans for your Parks and Recreation Committee is positioning itself to keep you informed so that the, together we can provide the very best for our community and our citizens. Any questions?
Okay, so next step, you're meeting with?
So initially, initially the plan was that we were going to meet with GMU, get the information, digest it, put it together and present it to you. December 15th is when we will get the information. January is when we were going to present it to you. This special meeting because they were going to be out of town was sort of bunked up, so they fed you the information initially. So you're getting raw data, you're not getting what we will work as a committee to present to you. So December 15th will be the next step, that they will present it to Larry, Laura. To us as a committee, we will digest it, come up with some suggestions and at the January, mid-January meeting, we will again, we will again come to you and present what we find.
More about our interpretation, things that we see, things that, that stand out to us as a committee through that fine lens as well.
Jeff, any questions of the committee?
Do we have?
You know, I think the, one of the really important deeper steps that the committee is going to be undertaking is that, you know, direct outreach to our, our youth sports community and any, any of the adult sports communities as well. Because we both are pretty known targeting organizations for pretty heavy users, RA facilities. So I think, you know, the, the outreach to them is, is going to be really important in finding a good way to summarize that input into useful information is going to be really apparent.
Good.
Because that, again, those, our organized sports organizations are very heavy users of RA facilities.
Okay.
Address, the center, anything?
So we all see the, the report from the GMU as well.
You will see it through us, you will see it through our eyes.
I'd like to see both.
I don't see any.
Yeah, the committee is an open committee, you're welcome to come.
If I may. I think the Board is interested in, is when we receive it on the 15th, they're going to want to see it as well. So we know that you guys will, will do an interpretation of next step, but we'll make sure the Board's got a copy.
Oh, yeah, we don't keep it.
As soon as we get, yeah.
You'll have it on 15th as well.
Oh, great, perfect. And another, just to, forgive me, I, I wanted to, because I, staff were doing hand dances in the background. Is it January or is it February that you all will be coming back to the Board with kind of your interpretation on next steps? I, for some reason, thought it was February, but I just wanted to sort of check.
February, okay, February.
Okay. Okay, but no, that sounds better, just for, I wanted to check, is this lady across the table allow me to schedule it? Absolutely, and that's what I thought.
Yeah, it's good, I didn't have a, February.
Anything else we sent? Julie? Ken? Kate? Or the last?
You're going to be meeting with key groups and Jeff, I recall the conversation we had about youth sports and whatnot, so I'm really pleased to see there is that kind of outreach. What groups and roughly what time are you going to be meeting?
Well, initially we were waiting to get the results back from the, from the survey. Everything got, we had a working plan set in place, everything got pushed a little bit. We're reaching out to them. Fortunately, different people within our committee do have contacts. We initially thought of inviting them to come to the committee, but it started to get a little more complicated and we didn't want cross-questioning, so we thought of going out to their meetings. So we're reaching out, just unfortunately, they don't all meet that frequently. But we, we plan on, I mean, unless someone can think of a group that we haven't thought of, including pickleball, we plan on meeting with, with all the groups out there.
That would be great. I think that having a list of who you're meeting with.
We do have a list.
And when would be helpful background.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, Aaron, is there a pickleball league or what?
Pickleball, pickleball's one of those things sneaking up on us.
Big demand for this.
Pickleball approached us at the very beginning of the formation of our committee and they did come and they did talk to us. It's a small group right now in Reston, a very persistent small group. But surprisingly, it's also something that's being taught at the high school.
At the high school?
Yeah, yeah. So in the midst of all this, I thought my son was trying to tease me, but in the midst of the whole pickleball emails going around, my. midst of the whole pickleball emails going around, my son walked by one day and said, "I really enjoy at school pickleball." I thought, I thought that someone had put him up to it, but no, actually, in the PE classes, they play pickleball.
It is a senior Olympic sport.
Yeah. No, that's.
I know it. Yeah, I know it's very big in Vienna and also in Arlington, yeah.
The people who have approached me about it are, a lot of them are former tennis players who, you know, who really can't do tennis anymore, but they, you know, they're, they want it.
Yeah, all we've, yeah, all we've asked of them is to be patient. No one's getting a priority or no one's being put on the back burner. It's just a matter of waiting for the survey to get in place, waiting for us to put recommendations. I know to a lot of people, it seems a simple thing, they'll just, just go ahead and do it, but that's just not the process. And that's not what we've been tasked with. We are not a committee to make our own decisions that way. We've been tasked by the Board. We are your committee, we're your advisory committee. We don't come up with stuff on our own. Our job is just to make the recommendations to you. And so we've asked them to be patient until we get all the data in front of us, and then we can put together that data and make recommendations to you.
Any other questions of the advisory committee? If not, Aaron and Tara, I would certainly like to thank you and your committee for all your hard work. That's just really, really exciting.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Can't wait to get the pickleball.
Yes.
Anyway, we're down to item F.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Interesting.
I move to adjourn.
I second that motion.
Is there discussion?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, same. The special meeting with the board of directors is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Very informative.
Jeff?
Yeah.